Stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We'll move to item three, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the two-page agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Presentation by Harden County Recorder. Thank you Barb.
Thanks for coming here at the beginning. First of all, I want to apologize for any miscommunication on my part. I could not attend last week's meeting because I had, I was the only one working. I had to close the office as I had to do today. But I felt it was important enough to do this. You have already received this. Does anybody else want to share one or?
I'll share one.
Thank you. I had James help me and I print this out to show some of the grabs and stuff. My presentation today is threefold. Basically because I wanted to, I want to present several things to the board. One is that I want to talk about how important it is that I hire Jane Shaw at this time. I believe she's the right employee at this time. Also, I want to ask for a third position. So, in addition to the full-time position which I want to offer to Jane, I want to offer or open up a third position eventually. And to point out that all this is within my budget. Not only is it within my budget, but it's below budget. So, letting set, I'll try not to be boring trying to put it on my face. If you look through here, you can see, basically compared to like counties and to the size, the number of documents we do, and I'm going by population, number of documents we do and all that. We are about the only county that only has one full-time employee. All other counties of like size and that do a comparable amount of documents. Have two full-time people in addition to the recorder. So, we have been, I've been asking for help since 2008. I'm sorry if this, some of this seems redundant to you because I presented some of this at the meeting when we met on my budget in November. But with the departure of my deputy recorder who left quite suddenly, it's kind of a bad thing, good thing. I was sorry to see her leave, but at the same time, it opened up possibilities to me because now my budget is not so stretched. At the time, I believe I communicated with you, Lancet, I intended to take that one position and make two positions out of it. So, I would like to have one full-time at $34,125. And the second position would be paid, would be 28 hours per week at $12 an hour, which I think is a fair wage. I guess I've been waiting for a long time to hire someone to fill this position. I feel like I have hired the right person. Because she is the type of person, she is, she wanted to work through her two-week notice at her former employer, which I agree with because I was not given that courtesy with my former deputy. And it hurts. It's a big setback when you have someone who leaves like that so suddenly. She had been here, the former employee had been here 25 years. So, she had accumulated 25 years of vacation time, 25 years of sick leave. All that hit my budget in about one month's time. So, I've taken some hits, but I still have enough money to start paying immediately. I've had, I hired Renee at, Renee McClellan at $10 an hour. She has helped where she can and when she can. But she is not full-time help. She doesn't want full-time. So, that's the position I'm in. With that, I don't have the option. I can save these figures and you can jot them down if you want. If I take the current salary that I want to pay, these, I'm appointing, not appointing, I'm hiring an assistant recorder. I was advised by several recorders that you don't just hire a deputy. You appoint a deputy first of all, but you don't appoint someone off the street. That's almost like something like earning your stripes, so to speak, that you get experience in the office and then move up. So, this assistant position, assistant recorder position may in fact turn into or evolve into a deputy recorder position. But for now, I'm just considering it like my top aide, my top assistant, my right-hand person, whatever you like to call it. That being said, because of the length of time that my former deputy had been here, she was pretty much at the max as far as vacation leave and sick leave. And so, that kind of drops off. So, that allows me more flexibility as well. So, compared to with the new plan where I would hire my assistant recorder at $34,125, her total package comes to $52,407. And the second position at $12 an hour, 28 hours a week comes to $20,369. There would be no benefits with the second position. So, within my 2015 budget, that puts me under by almost $4,000, $3,770. Compared to when my, if my former deputy had stayed, there's a $10,350 difference. So, basically, the savings to the county would be over $14,000 to do it this way. I submitted my, I'm sorry if you feel like you didn't have time to review the change of status that I submitted last week, but I submitted it on June 12th. And so, I was in between, I was still conducting interviews when you had your meeting last week. I had interviews on Wednesday. Thursday, I submitted the change of status because I had offered the job, she had accepted. And then your next meeting was one week ago on the 18th. So, I was in between meetings. I apologize, but I had two interviews on Wednesday and that's the only time they could meet. So, that's why I couldn't quite juggle everything. Jane has been good enough to work through, not only work through her two weeks' notice at her current employer, but she has also been working, coming over here after working a full day and working two or three or four hours at night. She's worked one full day, which was the first, the 16th, I believe, on Monday. And that's really, being by myself in the office, very hard for me to get anything done, much less train someone. So, it has worked out very well because it's quiet, the phones aren't ringing. If they do, we're not recording answering them. We can take messages or whatever. And so, that has, that part has worked out very well and she can, she would start full-time on Friday in two days and can hit the ground running. She's got a tremendous background and I look forward to be very seamless and very smooth.
Anybody have any questions?
No. Thanks Barb.
I think it's a nice presentation.
Thank you. And I was gonna say, if you have questions, you're far more flexible than I am in my schedule right at the moment. So, you know, you have to put up with me answering the phone and waiting on customers, but feel free to come down, ask me questions, you know. I still have a landline. I'm there after mine. But.
I think the biggest confusion we had last year was, or last week was the full-time position versus a temporary seasonal part-time.
Well, I'd like to comment on the form.
Yeah, it didn't fit anywhere to no answer.
It does not really fit what my situation was. I consider this, the way I came about to the hourly wage, and I'm glad you brought this up, was because I took her salary that I'm going to pay her divided by the number of hours in the year. That's why I came to the hourly wage. It fits within my budget. I think that's fair to her. And that gives her pay as she's helping out and working until she starts on Friday.
But what I was talking about was the full-time status versus temporary seasonal part-time. That, that was.
Yeah.
Total part that we refused that. And we were actually hoping you would be there.
As an employer, I don't like the word, I don't like the box that says permanent part-time because that I know employers don't use that word permanent very often anymore. It applies that no matter what, you have that job, so.
But, but you are hiring a full-time position at this rate?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, so a full-time would have fit in with the explanation.
But she didn't start, you know, her start dates are two different things. One is like hourly and then she starts salary on Friday.
Which is the same dollar amount.
Good to have the confusion cleared up though. Thanks Barb.
Any other questions?
I'm just glad to see that maybe we're moving forward here. I think the timing has been terrifically slow.
As far as what?
As we're still getting complaints from the office.
About what?
Timing. We just got an email last week from a person that can't get information.
Did you forward that to me or?
It was forwarded to you.
I remember seeing it. We are behind on scanning. That's one thing that's a very, I hate to say labor-intensive, but it takes a long time to do the scanning. And I am behind on the scanning. I'm behind on several things, but I'm one person. I'm working 65 to 75-hour weeks. I'm doing the best that I can. I'm taking care of the customers at the counter. All the documents are recorded every day. The vitals are taken care of as much as I can. I'm handling buku marriages right now because love is in the air evidently, so there are lots of those. And not to mention, believe it or not, snowmobiles even at this time of the year, it bodes in ATV. So, it's a lot and it's overwhelming for two people, much less one. So, I'm doing the best that I can. That's why I want to make this as quick and as seamless as possible and get her in there to know.
I think it's a good plan and you brought it to us and you explained it and it makes sense and it all fits within your budget.
And then so.
The $17.50, which would be part of the question, I understand salary, I understand you're going to bump her to, potentially bump her to a deputy's position. What percent of that of your salary is that?
Typically, it's 80%.
But what would this rate be at?
Oh, if, if, just to go automatically to deputy, you mean or?
Yeah, if this was a deputy's.
I don't know where it falls. I did not do that percentage.
Okay.
I think the former deputy was at $20.10, something like that, an hour.
At 80%.
That was 81.
81%. No, I guess the only question that really raises is 17.50 when you compare it to other clerks that work in the courthouse. It's one of the top-paid jobs. And that'll raise a lot of questions throughout the courthouse. It is your office. It does fit in your budget. I just want to make you aware of that part, if you're aware of that. Any other discussions? Well, thank you.
Can I say, can we say anything? I'm looking at what Michelle's got for a person over there she just hired. And all I know about him was that he had a degree in accounting. And July 1, all he's going to be making is $15.56 an hour. What qualifies her person more than what Michelle's got to have 17.50 an hour? I guess what experience does she, her person have over Michelle's?
I can't answer that.
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because she's got an accounting degree.
She has a degree on it as well. And she has, she is in my office now three or four times a day. She has a tremendous background in customer service and banking. And she has some accounting and she has great customer service recommendations. And I know she's very good at customer service. She is an avid outdoors person and she has real estate and legal.
On the hindsight, we probably shouldn't talk about the individual, the general. We shouldn't talk about the person of direct, direct person. It's position, not the person.
So, how do you want me to?
Well, I think the question is, and I just, in a, in a public meeting, we cannot talk about a person's performance or anything like that. So, we have to be very careful when we go like that.
Okay, so I shouldn't have answered.
And I, well, I think.
Sorry.
Don brings up a great question of the problem we have within the courthouse. As soon as someone makes more money in a different office, everybody wants to be that level instantly. And right now, you've just instantly given everybody else in the courthouse almost an automatic raise because they're all going to go to their department head or the department heads saying, "Look, why is she getting that?" And I don't know how many people you interviewed for this. I don't know what, you know, I don't know anything about the interview process. I don't know anything about it. But as you come to us and present us with 17.50 as the highest person paid in the courthouse, I can see why the other ones would be upset.
Now, doesn't department heads have, look at qualifications, time and the background and some of those things are put into that other than somebody young, right out of college? I mean, just experience add up to? I'm just asking, it sounds like this person has real estate or some kind of background.
Again, again, you're talking about persons, not positions.
Okay, so position-wise, though, if you're placing somebody in that position, what I'm asking is, don't you look at experience and qualifications when you're setting that pay to somebody with a lot more experience and qualifications and knowledge? I'm just asking, because I'm an older person if I'm going to go ahead.
I'm not the one who did the interviews. I can't answer that.
That's why, I guess if you're asking if you're discriminating against older people, the answer is no, you're not. And you are going to pay more for someone that comes in with, with experience, absolutely. You are going to pay more when some, you know, versus someone that doesn't have any, any education at all. You're going to pay more for the person that has experience, that has age.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yep, absolutely. But, you know, where's the top end? That's the thing.
Yeah, my question was just that a lot of times experience and knowledge, but he's supposed to, uh, into your qualifications versus somebody who doesn't have that experience level yet.
This is what we spoke about though in the department head meeting. When I said, I took someone who was a deputy from another office and I paid her in my office what I could afford to pay her. And that's, and that's a clerk position and that's not what a clerk position would probably be able to start out at in a different office because that budget can't hold it. And we were all there and heard it and he said, there needs to be, you know, a beginning and an end to what you offer to that person. And then your leeway is what their experience and knowledge base and stuff that they bring to it. But you can't, you can't just say, "Well, this is my, my base that I, I'm willing to pay someone, but then bring someone in and put them out here outside of that range because they're either, you know, not as qualified or over-qualified to what you typically hold in there." Yeah, and so, that's what he discussed and he agreed. And I don't think I'm speaking out of line for him, but he agreed when he was here that we have an issue here where people are operating outside of these, these, I don't know what you want to call it, but these, these ranges of pay from department to department. And that's something that our county needs to work on because just pointing out Michelle's office, she cannot hire someone off the street the way that I can for the rate of pay. My, my budget has it in a higher-paid position to be able to pull someone in as a clerk and cover it. First doesn't. So, anyone who starts in her office is probably going to be at the lowest part of the, the total pool.
That's, it's. But that's, yeah, I guess that's something that we don't currently have. We talked about it with him.
Right. But I mean, like, the only way to fix it is to give her department more money and say, "Okay, now you have more money to go hire someone as a clerk position."
That'd be okay.
And I think we're getting off topic here and I apologize, but I wanted to state what, what it was that we were talking about. And we've already handled this at the department head meeting, saying, "There's an issue and it needs to be resolved."
Right now, I think she's needing help. It seems like she just.
Oh, she needs help and she needs to hire someone and I agree with that.
And the more experienced, the better. And I set of a set met with experience.
But I will say, I do not think it's fair to hire a clerk position at 17 something an hour when her department, my department, the sheriff's department cannot do the same. That's the part that I think is, is inappropriate. But I do not disagree with the fact that she needs someone and she needs someone with experience and she needs to get them in there now.
And it's not a clerk.
Well, that's another thing we brought up at the department head meeting and I'm not afraid to say that you weren't present. Mr. Groof sat here and said.
Yeah, I definitely was, yeah.
How is that different than any other day? You closed the office.
Let's, let's back off a little bit.
Yeah, that's.
I apologize.
I, I think the statements were made on the wages and the part of that I'm cautioning.
I would like to say, finish my thought though. He said here, "We cannot create new positions outside of the realm of what was already established on record by the board of supervisors, which included deputy and clerk positions." That's what my thought was when I wanted to finish.
Okay, more to your presentation Barb? Anything else?
Is that, is that okay if I leave?
I would stick around for the next one.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Uh, next thing on the agenda is the change of status for the recorder's office. So, what we have is Jane Shaw, assistant recorder at $34,125 full-time, hiree. And I will ask for a motion.
I'd like that motion to get it to discussion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I guess I just feel from the lack, I don't know what you call it Barb from you, that you spent so much time, I can't even, I guess I can't even, you know, I don't want to use any of the wrong words, but you've put us in a hard place now because of your timing. You need, you need help. We've said, we've, we've said that for six, six, seven months now. You needed help. Jane quit here in January or was laid off and.
Cheryl.
Or, no, but Jane Shaw quit. And our, at that time, Jessica went to Barb and said, "Hey, we've got a really good person. You've had lots of opportunities to get someone in here and yet nothing ever happens. And now you're bringing us finally a fix to the problem where the person that's, I feel, is being paid too much compared to whatever everyone else is getting paid in the office." But my concern is for the people of the county because they haven't been serviced well at all.
I totally agree.
For the last six months. So, now you're making me either vote and, and now we're going to spend more money because of the fixed problem. We're going to spend more money and get someone in there at a, at a higher rate.
We are not spending more money. I just told you, we, I am way under budget. I'm S. Four thousand, almost $4,000 just by itself from what my budget was projected when I had a deputy recorder. It's over $10,000. So, how is that not a savings?
You're okay paying someone the highest rate in the courthouse, walking in the door.
I'm not paying deputy status because I'm not going to hire a deputy off the street. Point that. Person has experience. That's what I'm looking for. I need someone who can immediately offer assistance.
Hearing others?
I'm not going to get that with a $10 an hour clerk. I guess I don't understand why I'm, I'm kind of being, like there's some hamstringing going on here. You want this service, you want this level of service. I've been operating at basically half-staff. It would be as if Michelle or Goddard or else, anybody with more staff, cut that in half. One person leaves, that's half-staff for me. That leaves me and me alone. So, the interview, I don't take this job lightly by any means. I don't take the position that I'm hired for lightly. It takes time to do things the right way and I believe in doing it the right way. I advertise, I interview. I had over 30 applicants and I interviewed six. So, this is the one I chose. So, why now to stone wall me or to give me a problem? I would think that you would want to make this as quick and as seamless as possible to get the help I need and re-up that customer service level.
One, one question I would have is, your previous employee left on March 20th.
I'm sorry, what?
Your previous employee left March 20th.
Yes.
April, May, June.
She resigned, um, March 18th, not March 20th.
So, that's April, May, June. That's three months, three months later. Why did it take three months to get this position out and filled when you have been half-staffed?
When you have someone leave that suddenly, wasn't exactly in my plan in, when would I have done, October of 2012? To fit this in. I took several big hits to my budget. Between vacation time and sick leave alone were thousands of dollars that I anticipated. At that particular moment, March 21st, the first day you were in my office, I think it was the 24th maybe, that Monday.
I came in before she left.
And I told you I was going to try and create two positions out of this.
Yes.
And one of your questions to me was, "Do you have the money in the budget?" I didn't even know where I was going to fall at that point. It wasn't until a month later, after all of that sifted out, that I knew what I had left to work with. So, there's one month right there. And then if you figure a couple of weeks to advertise.
Part, part of that conversation went on as you didn't know if you needed the money. I went to the auditor's office, asked if we had the money. I came back.
Yeah, you wanted to know if I would need an amendment and I said, "I thought I could work it out, so I would not." So, and I did.
And my only question is, is three months. We've been pushing for three months that you've been single-staffed, but it took three months to hire somebody. I just want the.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
You've been saying you've been single-staffed for three months. But it also took three months to get the job app out there, start taking interviews and, or two and a half months to get the job app out there, start taking interviews.
Two months if you take.
And I stopped.
Because all that came out of my April budget.
And I did stop in prior to Cheryl leaving with this conversation. The day before she left is when I talked to you.
No, she was, she was already gone. You came in on my office because you came in that Monday morning.
I came in before that too. Because I didn't want you to be in a bind and that's why I talked to you on it. And we're supportive, you don't get me wrong. But I just need to communicate, get things going, try to move things faster so that you didn't fall behind. And I come in periodically to help, ask questions, what you needed.
You've been very good about that.
So, I mean, I.
I'm not saying anything against that. You've been very good about keeping in touch.
But the, the big, the biggest question.
Because talking about $10 an hour when I wanted to hire Renee McClellan at $10 helped me. You fought me on that as well. So, I'm a little confused. You know, it's like you're trying to tell me who to hire and at what rate to hire them, which I don't think you can do.
I, I think some of it is awareness before it comes to the board, talking to us what you're doing. The deal with Renee, you had her in on a Friday evening. We're getting phone calls.
Before what? I'm sorry?
On a Friday evening to come in on a Monday morning. We're getting phone calls on a Friday evening.
Oh, okay.
And nobody was aware of anything. And then Monday, you were gone to an ISAC meeting, I believe.
Well, I had to do that to cover my office shifts.
Right, which is understandable, but.
It wasn't an ISAC meeting, it was training.
Training.
Yeah.
But a phone call says, "Hey, I got somebody to cover the office on Monday." That, just communication, that's easy.
But that's three months ago now. I'm trying to move forward here and get going, so.
I'm not trying to keep you from going forward. I'm just trying to make it clear as we go forward. Any other discussion?
Just that, just got to go to, got to go to a vote and, you know, I guess from our position, I'm going to vote for it. She's put me in this position and I want to help the people of Harden County out. We could sit here all day and talk back and forth on things that are and aren't getting done. I think everybody here in the courthouse knows exactly what the true story is and.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
And the, the audit of, the audit that was turned in this last while, it's, pretty well explains it in that, so.
The attorney general actually cleared me and then he was bringing on that, so I'm not.
The attorney general said that we can't remove you from office. That's what they said. Our auditing firm lists out the reasons of what's not going on in that office. But it's our responsibility to get as best services we can get there, in there, I feel, as quick as we can. And if this is a proposal that she's put before us and that's how she wants to run with it and it's within her budget. Am I ready to vote?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, I can get my papers back in order. What do we have on the agenda? Fireworks permit.
We have a fireworks permit from Larry Bolvance, Bolvance Farms, for July sixth, two thousand fourteen. Looks like we've got yeses in all the box.
Yep.
So it looks like she's ready to roll. Make a motion to accept that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have, are a bunch of resolutions that we do at the end of the year to start the new year. First resolution would be state replacement credit rates.
Make a motion to... Move that following resolution be adopted on the homestead rate, credit rates, low-income in military. All at a hundred percent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next resolution, budget appropriations.
Do we have two sheets on this, or we just have one?
I got two sheets, there's three sheets, four sheets, three sheets.
Which one do you want? Okay, so this one got stuck in the middle, okay, I'm waiting now.
Do I hear a motion on budget appropriations?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution for appropriations of the twenty-fourteen, fifteen fiscal year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is resolution to advance issuance of payments.
Make a motion that we, we adopt the following resolution on advanced issue and payments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is resolution of inter-fund operating transfers.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution on inter-fund operating transfers.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next one is budget appropriation adjustment with same-service area fiscal year fourteen and fifteen.
Make a motion that resolution be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is resolution budget appropriation adjustment with same-service area fiscal year thirteen, fourteen.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for twenty-fourteen, fifteen.
It's been moved in, which, which one did you just do wrong?
Twenty-thirteen or fourteen.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Rod.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we got is approval of jail fees, and we got Nick here.
You have in front of you a resolution, um, that discusses jail fees for various services. Most fees haven't changed since two thousand, and we think that it's time to make them more in line with the rest of the world. We're asking to move the daily room and board fee from thirty dollars to fifty dollars, work release to sixty dollars or half the net wage, whichever is less, and then it stipulates the state, county, and federal fees that we charge my contracts already at fifty, sixty, and seventy dollars. I'd ask that you take a look at that. Also, we're adding a ten dollar service charge to public and applicant fingerprinting because that's became, uh, more of a major issue in the last couple of years with, with printing and done. All these things are, are in line with the counties around us, and counties similar in our size, and we'd ask you to approve that resolution regarding those fees.
Randy still in the room, or did he leave?
No, he left.
We gave this resolution to Randy to look at here about an hour ago. I kind of wanted to visit, but...
All right. I did check with the county attorney before the meeting started to see if he had a chance to look at it and advise whether he did.
Bet he did.
Yeah.
Give it a second. Those are all so quiet. We have a lot of people in the room, I can do a roll call while we're waiting. What was that?
He's on it.
Okay. Randy, what we have is this resolution setting jail fees. I brought it to you this morning, a copy of it, you've been through it?
Yes.
Any questions?
Actually, no, no, didn't have any questions. I mean, everything looked in order just as far as, uh, setting fees went, and I believe that's all it proposes to do.
Okay.
I know, I know Nick, um, has a few other things, I believe, in the works, but, uh...
That's coming up next.
This will be, this will be the first step in regard to actually setting the fees. It looks appropriate from doing that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution setting jail fees effective July first, and, given the Sheriff's Office, uh, being the designee for the county attorney to collect the funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Discussion action on collection of fees and fines. Nick, I'll turn it back over to you again.
Good. Uh, the Sheriff's Office over the last six months to a year has been investigating the idea of a better collection system to, uh, to collect those fees that you just approved. And the system we currently have is, is, I would say, fractured at best. We don't have a good way of collecting or enforcing the collection of the fees, and it's a cumbersome process that, right now, thirty people are trying to keep together, and I think it would be much more efficient if it was just boiled down to one or two people. Part of that process is working with the county attorney's office because the code section that involves collections authorizes the county attorney's office to collect various fees. On side A would be court fines and court debts that are, are delinquent. Side B would be the, the jail fees, the room and board, work release, and so forth. Again, the, the code stipulates the county attorney is authorized to, to be the collection agent, or one of the collection agents for those fees. We've been in contact with the county attorney's office over the last months, and I think we have, uh, we came to an agreement, um, that, that those fees should be collected, and the Sheriff's Office is willing to, to take over the collection of those fees by having a person authorized to do that, or a person, um, employed to do that. We would ask that the Board consider, I, I think you have a memo of understanding in front of you, and also, uh, an intent to collect, uh, that would be signed by the county attorney. If the county attorney agreed with my statement, I would ask that the county attorney sign that intent, uh, that we could submit to the state prior to July first, and then we could also submit the memo of understanding, and then if the Board would authorize the Sheriff's Office on behalf of the county attorney, we could designate to collect those funds, is what we're looking for today.
Randy, do you have any comments on this?
I know what I had discussed with Nick, kind of progression of our discussions over the past few months, um, was, well, part of it was, um, what I had originally proposed a number of years ago to the Board, uh, in regard to the collection of fines and the like, and how felt that it would take additional personnel in the county attorney's office. That did not go too far. But basically what Nick had proposed, what our discussion had been, was being able to, provide a position or a person within the Sheriff's Department in order to handle, if you would want to say, the paperwork. The paperwork, the day-to-day aspect, the meeting with people, and in regard to trying to put together payments and bring about payments, uh, short of involving the court system. Now, that position, I, I don't believe would be able to show up in court and obtain a judge's signature, or perhaps bring a contempt action in order to enforce that payment, and that would have to be what is supplied by the county attorney's office. But I think with that standpoint, if there's an administrative person or personnel with regard to this collection outfit, I believe that the county attorney's office would be able to handle the in-court collection efforts, um, without adding additional personnel or staff within my office. So that's kind of how this has transformed, um, where we would basically provide, if you would want to say, court enforcement, where the jail department would, uh, provide the manpower, the bookkeeping, and the like. And based upon that understanding, and I think what we talked about, that is the, that is the agreement that we agreed.
I also would note, I, I asked Diane from the clerk's office to come down, if anybody had any questions regarding court fines. It's my understanding or my impression that, that there's roughly three million dollars in court fines that aren't collected at this juncture. I don't know how many of those apply to this program, but, but I think that, uh, that's an important number. The county would receive, or the, the, the office or county, either one would receive a portion of that, I believe the portion is, is twelve percent of the monies collected. The county would also benefit from a hundred percent of the jail fees collected, forty percent going directly to the general fund, sixty percent back to infrastructure and, and salaries and things we could use in the jail. The folks we've been talking to in some of the other counties that have helped us mold this program, think, at least their experience is that it's not unreasonable after just a few years, this thing is going to collect a quite bit of money. For example, we used a county similar to our size in jail, uh, the first year they collected roughly fifty thousand dollars, the second year a hundred, and now they're, this year to date, back in May or June, they were at three hundred and eleven thousand dollars in collections. That's a significant number that we can bring back to the general fund, certainly pay for the position itself. I, I can't, you know, guarantee, that, that question's been asked, if we can guarantee this thing's going to pay for itself in the first year, I can't say that. It depends on the performance, it depends on the money that's out there, but, but, uh, it's a significant number, and, and I, I think there's really little to no risk of moving forward with this.
Can I just say something? I think it's a fantastic idea to do this because we, the state has two different collection effort's going now. To the Department of Revenue, a delinquent client goes to them first, they add a ten percent fee on it. If they can't collect, they kick it back to us, and then it goes to a third-party collection agency. They have a twenty-five percent fee, they add on to that, and that money, when it's collected, it goes to them. We're not seeing anything of it. So if we can get those cases from them, that's just more money into our pocket. And if we can get these people coming in, like, regularly, with that, like, right after court, you know, these people tend to kind of forget that they hold this fine, and it goes for six months, a year, you know, till they finally get a notification that, "Oh, gosh, I think I hold this fine yet." You know, and then they'll start paying on it, but if you can get them in here as soon as they get out of court, and get them paying on it regular, you'll collect a lot more. So I think it's a great idea.
In one of the models that we looked at, the, the person that, that works with the, the clients, if you will, um, has four thousand clients that she has touched, she touches basically every month, um, that has, you know, they may pay twenty-five or fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, pay the thing in full. It's also, with this organizational plan, it's something that, that just one person has control of, and, and I think will streamline the process in terms of, of making everybody responsible in the same way, rather than the people who can pay, the people who just get laid off, whatever, and, and they stay right with it every month, so I think it's a good program.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Nick.
We can do an action. If we did an action, what form of a motion would you like that in?
The action order requesting is, uh, that the county attorney sign the, uh, the second page of what you have there, which is the full commitment, and then, uh, we'd have authorization from the Board to submit the memo of understanding to the State and proceed with the collections as, as planned.
How do we give the attorney permission to sign?
You don't.
I didn't think so.
That's what needs to happen by July first.
But the remaining part, I think, is what, uh, would need to be done by the Board, would be the authorization to submit, um, memorandum of understanding.
Does anybody want to make a motion, or?
Make that motion to accept the memorandum.
Is that all that needs to be in that motion? Is that it? That's all that needed to be in there, correct Randy?
And submit it to the State.
I'm, I'm assuming the Board has a memorandum of understanding before it's had an opportunity to review, is my understanding there. I mean, there was a meeting, um, this morning.
Prior.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
We have had two meetings on this, so, we did, Dave, McDaniel, our sheriff, and Nick, as a charge of the jail, brought this to us, uh, probably a month ago, two months ago, and then again this morning, so, I guess I just want to say, recommend them for going out and looking for things like this, that, I don't want to call it an income revenue stream, because that, that's not what it really is, but yet, at the end, that's what it is, it's just people not paying their fines, and we're, we're not taking the time to go get it, and I think you've come up with a plan here that I think wins, or works for both sides, so, plus maybe help you out with other duties in the jail, because we do have a really, a really well-run jail over there, so I commend Nick with that, and, um, Dave's doing a really good job, you know, in his first couple of years here, so, I think it's a really great plan.
Any other discussion?
No, but thanks.
Hearing none, other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have is the Appointment to Veterans Affairs Commission, which Rex has sent us a letter of Bonnie Whitaker. I believe that's how you pronounce it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think so.
This is for another three-year term, starting date July first, two thousand fourteen.
It's a reappointment, so go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Appointment to the Zoning Administrator, which previous year was Dawn.
She still want it?
Still want it?
What he wants, it may be now, or...
That's a yes.
Yeah, that's a definite yes. That's a definite yes. I'll go ahead and make that motion, probably has a chance to say no, I was at it. I'll make a motion that Dawn is the zoning administrator.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of tax levies taxable payable fourteen and fifteen, which is the sheet we have here.
It's a long one.
It's a long one. Yep. And I'll make a motion to approve the tax levies payable 14, 15.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Appointments to Health Insurance Advisory Committee, which is a list of Donnell, Kelly Collins, Dave McDaniel, Darrell Alfredson, Lynn Adams, Terry Clemmons, Mike Moche, Jeff Volkerts, Bill Rahm, Susan Engelking, Ian Rigg, Kim Haley, who I don't believe is out there anymore, Cheryl Bullman, and Dan Astrid. So I would ask for that approval, probably striking the one that's no longer employed.
Kim?
Yep.
I will make that motion.
And I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Solutions Inc. Agreement. This is our agreement, we do this annually with Solutions. James heads this up as the IT Department. Again, last year he said this was a great product.
Yeah, like you said, it's an annual agreement, we've gone through it and reviewed it, everything seems to be in line. I think the total package is around $29,380 for the annual software agreement, as well as the hardware coverage. Product is working great, we have no problems, recommend approval.
Ask for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for Solutions Inc.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Change of Status in Sheriff's Office, Melinda Gurkey and Lance Lempke, both promotions, both full times.
Make a motion to accept Melinda Gurkey, it's a promotion, it's at the Sheriff's Department, salary rate of $12.90, Administrative Assistant.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have Lance Lempke.
I'll make a motion to approve employee change of status for Lance Lempke, full-time promotion, 2043.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Change of Status, County Attorney's Office, this is something that we didn't catch when we did the annual salaries, and it's just a correction is what I'm.
Yeah, apparently you added the improved increase in salary to an older salary rate from a couple of years back, so I know Kelly brought it, brought to our attention, and just figured the change of status would be the easiest way to correct it so that Catherine would end up with great rate of pay.
Ask for approval?
It wasn't in my stack, so go ahead, go ahead and make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Catherine Austin, salary rate at $43,350, pay increase, full-time.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Sorry for the confusion. Any other discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of Heartland Risk Pool Renewal Documents. And this is our annual renewal that we do at Heartland Risk, we are an owner in the pool, and this is our insurance. We have three documents, approved at the same time.
I don't know why we couldn't.
How about two motions?
Okay.
One for the agreement and then one for the other two.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the agreement with Heartland.
I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, the next one is?
The next one's we have, it's Client Authorization to Bind Coverage and Client Confirmation of Schedules and Exposures, those two.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve those.
And I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the Cleaning Contract, this is one that we opened up the beds the other day, Randy has printed up the resolution, and we are just here to approve it. It's been gone through, I think you, have you guys had a chance to go through it?
Yeah. I'll make most. Oh, go ahead.
Just to let you know, on page two of the contract itself, did make the changes that were requested in relation to payment, and that monthly sum would be due and payable for spilling cycle following previous month's service, and I believe that was the only provision that was requested.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, Cleaning Insurance Contract.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have is an Appointment to the Green Belt Home, Green Belt Home Care Board, and we have one opening, we currently have two applicants that have applied, Marley Lawler and Mary Lee Lawler and Deb Smith. And these applications have been up there for us to have a chance to look at, to entertain a motion.
Well, two solid applicants, I'll make a motion to accept Mary Lee Lawler's application. She's had past home care experience, served on the Board of Health, administration in hospice, RN, and lives in uncorporated Harding County. So I'd like to appoint Mary Lee Lawler to the Green Belt Home Care Board, representing Harding County at large.
Do you have a term on that? Is it a replacement term, is it a new term, is it a three-year term?
This will be new for her, three years.
Three years? Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion?
Guess I'd like to thank both of them to, for stepping up and wanting to be on a committee like that. You know, Ron sits over there on that committee and it's a lot of work, so I appreciate that people wanting to serve on those communities, it just makes Harding County a much better place.
Any other discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Ineligibility, ineligible homestead military credits to be disallowed for 2014 payable 15, 16.
Make that motion for 2014 payable 2015 and 16 as printed on the sheet that we have in front of us.
I'll second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve State Recreational Trail Application for the Iowa River Trail, and we have Chris here to speak on behalf of that a little bit.
Thanks, Lance. Yeah, I'm Chris Weeding, I'm the current Chair of the Volunteer County Appointed Board, the Harding County Trails Commission, and we're presenting a resolution to the Supervisors for the 2014 Iowa State Rec Trails. This is a different resolution, an application that was submitted in 2013 by Harding County. In this application, we're asking Harding County to only be a co-applicant along with Marshalltown. Just to review, the trail application in 2013 was for, to obtain the trail, and that has been completed. This next phase would be for the next step to starting the building process or the construction process. And in this round of grants, Marshalltown has taken that lead and passed a resolution to take the lead role in that. So in a way, this is a formality resolution, this does not hold the taxpayers of Harding County to any expenditures. Marshalltown will be the fiscal agent and the cash flow agent. What this resolution basically states is that to, for Marshalltown, who's already passed this, to go back to their tax base when they're expending dollars into Harding County, and if they get the question, why are we giving these dollars back to Harding County, that those are, that this is in place for them and us being a co-applicant there. The total grant that we are, amount that we're applying for in this round from Iowa State Rec Trails is $775,000. This is a fully reimbursable grant by the state of, by the Iowa State Rec Trails Program. There is a match aspect to this, of course, as many of these grants are. Fortunately for the program, Region 6, we have a grant, and looking for an awarding of $360,000 from Region 6 Transportation Funds that were specifically placed for trails and in progress, so that would take care of the full match for this, and vice versa as a $90,000 match would be needed for the Region 6, so these would offset. An additional $200,000 for this next phase is being requested through community REAP programs. Our Board is working with each community to apply for a REAP application, and those REAP applications should not put those communities in any position to not receive other REAP dollars as there's different programs set up within REAP. This would be for trails, recreation, conservation, REAP dollars. And so that's the basis of this resolution. The, to kind of go into more detail of what this next phase, what this grant would cover, be a bookend approach to this 35-mile trail, starting first in Marshalltown, or at this, this would be simultaneously, the first phase in Marshalltown will be about a 7,000 linear feet section from middle of their town out to the largest bridge in Marshall County, which is a Summit Street Bridge, is a concrete bridge platform, and basically takes folks out to the city limits, very near that of Marshalltown. In Harding County, we kicked around a few different ideas of what to do, we finally settled on in the process of doing a finished trail in the Steamboat Rock section, which would take from, basically from S-56 through that south side, just outskirts of Steamboat Rock, across the Iowa River Bridge to complete that, and to the gravel road elevator access. With any grant application you need, especially trails, you'd need a good, solid application that has a point A and a point B, so those fit into the plan. This one, down the road, because Harding County has more miles than Marshalltown does, we're definitely going to see the flipping because our, the Steamboat Rock section's about 3,000 linear feet, a little bit over, so some disparity there, but if there's any concern there, hopefully that is, you know, dissipated in that we have more trail in Harding County, we're going to see those, those linear feet back with the next, following projects down the road. The trail construction in Marshalltown would be a 10-foot wide concrete paved trail through their city limits. In Harding County, we've taken a little different approach in basis of this being a multi-use trail. The construction will consist of an eight-foot wide concrete trail with a five-foot wide soft path trail next to it, and that's to accommodate snowmobile usage in the winter, and we'll be working with all the jurisdictions and city limits to be able to accommodate those and make sure that their usage in city limits are, you know, is going to work with those cities, so. Any questions, I guess, at this point from the Board, or discussion?
I think you spelled out a lot.
And you should have received, the resolution has not changed from what you received on Friday, or Friday or Thursday of last week in regards to.
Braxtriz.
In case you didn't, if anybody else wants one.
I know the amount of time that you've put into this, Chris, so appreciate it.
Well, as always, there's always a few curveballs thrown our way, and we've worked through those. I do have some more detailed information for the Supervisors as well in regards to this, the first phase of the project that these grants would cover. The only other update is that, you know, our ninth Personnel Board has been working very hard at putting things and getting the foundations in place. We're excited to start to unveil this and have a lot of resources for the general public in not only information, but also donation and, you know, fundraising opportunities for people to contribute. Those should be going online by the first part of July, we'll have a website, we'll have a lot of information. We'll also be working to get out to each of our communities during town festivals and be present. We want to, we're working real hard to be out in front and answering those questions and concerns as they may come. There's just been a lot of, a lot of foundation groundwork to make sure we've got the right things and everything in place, so.
Thank you. Can I ask Randy his opinion here in a second?
About the only thing I'd bring out and kind of highlight for the Board in regard to the resolution is the provision that you are agreeing, basically, to maintain the trail, keep it up and running for a period of 20 years following the completion. So you are obligating the County in regard to that aspect of things.
That, that's no different change than when we, in the County, agreed to accept and do the application last year of accepting that land in terms of trail form, it's the...
And one of the things we put in that bylaws is that you have to have the money a year in advance to keep that maintained.
Right. Right, yep. Yep, the maintenance issue, it falls on the reds, or the agreement with our Board to, as Volunteer Board, to take that responsibility off the County.
Right. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank him, again, for all, for all his work, and I think I've set up from day one, those trails built in stages, and I know people, and I've talked to other people that have built trails, there's a lot of, sometimes a lot of bickering between who gets theirs built first, when the end goal is to have the whole thing completed. So people, you know, maybe they would want a different part of the trail done first, well, we're not, you know, you're not quitting, it just takes a few years, and as these grants come available, that the goal is to get it all done.
Yep.
And so it's always nice to be first on the block, but it's, you know, your goal is to have it all done, so.
If I can speak on the Harding County section, you know, we did a lot of discussion over opening this in a rough form and trying to complete all these bridges in Harding County, and just using the material we have right now, we just felt that from the standpoint of folks seeing what this is going to be and can be, a finished section and a finished approach was, was more appropriate. This, the Steamboat Rock section will connect to the current Pine Lake Bike Trail as part of, you know, their REAP process and doing a horseshoe loop up and getting folks safely across the Iowa River and from a visual and, I guess, beauty standpoint, that's, that's one of the more scenic areas of this trail, right around that, that Steamboat Rock area, and then following south down that Iowa River and all the cascades and cliffs with Tower Rock and such, so it does, it's a little shorter than the Marshalltown, but again, to make a competitive application for 775,000, if you recall last year, we were the top awarded project by Iowa State Rec Trails. I think the grant we're putting together should put us right there at the top again. I know there's a lot of, a lot of excitement down in Des Moines for our project as well to see this completed and to see this move forward.
Well, thank you. Can I ask for an entertaining of a motion there?
Make a motion to accept the resolution to approve the State Recreational Trail Application for the Iowa River Trail.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? I know you've contacted Steny Moore Steimes back and forth, I'm, thank you for coming here explaining this thoroughly.
You're welcome.
I don't think I could explain those that good, so.
We can eat Sleeping and Breathing Trail for the last, a couple bucks.
Any other discussion? Harry, none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sent. Set time and date for a public hearing, fiscal year 2014, 15 budget amendment. The date that's been chosen is July 16th at our regular 10 o'clock meeting.
Is there a time or just a start?
10:02 sounds good to me.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for 10:02, July 16th. Any discussion? In the conference room. Any discussion?
The main purpose of this is, or the necessity to have this is the fact that I need to reimburse the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, the money that they loaned us to expend, to purchase the trail, to get the reimbursement. That meant I had to have this at the beginning of the year. But we are also going to add on some other things that allow for grant pass-throughs so that if they come up in the future unplanned, we don't have to continuously run to do more amendments to do that. So I'm going to additionally add an equal amount of revenue and expenditures so that in the future, should, like I say, a pass-through come to us, for example, with the trails or with any endowment grants or anything like that, we don't have to worry about paying for a expensive amendment. It will already be built into there. So we're going to accomplish a few things with this right at the beginning of the year and hopefully it gave the need for a future amendment.
Thank you.
Proactive ways.
Any other discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, secondary roads department.
Second, I have one permit. Permit 6-25-14A. Permit with minimum power cooperative. Make a motion to accept that one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Secondary roads, anything?
Busy repairing flood damage. We still have one road that's closed up on Franklin and Hardline, but north west of all of them.
It's just on the north side of the road, isn't it?
Well, yeah. They have a sign up and we have a sign up, so. Retriever disc is in and it's mounted and ready to go. It's a little wet yet. The guys feel so, it dries off. We'll get that going and try that out. So, other than that.
Still hauling rock.
Hauling a lot of rock. From the front of market roads and so forth, like energy. They're all passable now. They're not completely fixed yet. So probably take a couple, two or three trips to, you know, once the rock gets polished in, over again and played again. So, but they're all passable except for that one spot.
Thank you. Any other business? Harry, none? All entertain motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjournment.